Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the budget hearing for the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Schools. I'm going to turn it over to Kemet Liming, our treasurer, for the budget hearing.
Thank you. I didn't make enough hard copies for everyone that's here, so hopefully you either got a chance to pick one up over there, or you're close enough that you can see the projection here. This is the tax budget that we're reviewing tonight. A tax budget is a document that is mainly used to set the bond retirement millage to retire our principal interest on our debt for the bond issue when we built the middle school in 2006 and renovated three of the other four buildings. So from that bond issue, the county auditor and the budget commission determines what millage needs to be charged against our property valuation to retire that debt. So that's one of the main purposes of this tax budget. The other one is just kind of to review what the plan is for the year. A tax budget can be amended at any time. It's not set in stone. And the portion of this that deals with the five-year forecast is only our general fund. Does not include any grants, or lunchroom fund, or athletics, or any of those student activity accounts that we have. So let's just start the first page. The first three pages were sent to me by county auditor David Graham. So I did not create these pages, but they are pertaining to our school district. You can see there that if you look over to the right, we have 54.8 mills that in the history of our school district has been voted in. This is voted millage, not effective millage, if you know the difference. I don't need to get into all that. That takes a half hour alone to work on. But then enters a two-mill permanent improvement levy that was passed, I'm guessing about 20 years ago, before I got here. If you look on the left column, you can see the total amount of money that the county auditor predicts we will bring in from the general fund millage we passed over the years and the two-mill PI levy that was passed, like I say, about 20 years ago. The budget period that he's referring to here is July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2021. So we're about six months ahead of time approving a tax budget for a fiscal year 2021. So if we want to flip the page over to the next one, this is the next document that was sent to me by the county auditor, and this shows all the levies that have been passed right there over the years. Has the millage, and then off to the right column, how much the auditor estimates each levy will bring in this year. The dates on these, if you're trying to figure out the exact date these levies were passed, it's kind of confusing because some of the dates that they've listed are the date that the levy actually passed. Some others are a date that we might have replaced an old levy. So maybe there was a levy passed in the '70s, and in 1999, we replaced it to today's property values, then the date on there would be 1999. Or there are some that we renewed over the years back when we had temporary levies and not continuing levies. So you might see some dates that are the same year, one year apart. We did not pass two tax millages in the same year. One of them's probably a renewal, or something like that. Let's see. Any question about any of that? Again, this shows the millage that was passed and how much the auditor estimates that we will bring in from those. The following page, this is an old page, an outdated page they send to us, that the only information on this entire page is what our property tax valuation is for our school district. So they have everything on there, and just if you go up a little bit that way, right there. That number, 622,790,000, is the estimate from Green County Auditor for what our property value, all the properties in the school district are valued for tax purposes. And if any of the board has any questions, let me know as we go along through this. The next page is the start of the five-year forecast. This is going to be really hard to see if you don't have a hand carry because the numbers are small. Again, this is a form that has to be filed to the state with a state auditor twice a year, and it's general fund only. Each column is a fiscal year. The three on the left are history, and the five on the right are the forecast itself. So the main row that, and we've all as a board, and probably a lot of you in the audience have seen this before, so let me just say that the row that's important is 7.02. That's the cash balance. I can't see that on there. There we go. Go down to 7.02, about right there. That's the cash balance in our general fund for the June 30th of the year that's listed. So we have, the first column is 2017, and 18, and 19, and then as we go into the future for the actual forecast years, what we predict the balance will be June 30th for each one of those years, 2020 through 2024. The problem, of course, for our district is that the last three years go into the red, and those are minuses. There you go, the last three. Fiscal year 2022 shows minus $1,893,626. Because that year is in the red, the Ohio Department of Education has notified us that we could be put into fiscal caution, which is the first step. There's a fiscal caution, fiscal watch, fiscal emergency. It just increases as we go along their oversight and their participation in what they recommend that we do, and fiscal emergency, they get to the point where a lot of the items, they are more demanding than we do, I guess. I've never been in that, so I can't tell you a whole lot about that one. But the letter stated that we will need to get them some information on what our plan is at some point here in the future. Let's see. I just wanted to say that there are a lot of individual numbers on this document that we could talk all night about. I don't know what kind of detail you want to get into. Basically, if you get a chance to review this, our state money is not literally frozen, but it has a very small, it's projected to have a very small increase, and our expenditures are increasing by more than our revenues. It doesn't take a financial genius to realize that that's not a good thing. We've already begun making cutbacks, and there's a levy on the ballot in March to try to alleviate the situation. Any questions about that forecast? We've already reviewed this before numerous times, and it's already been filed. Did you want to just, yes?
Yeah, can I just, you know, we, because at one point, we were in the red in 2021, but we made $2.3 million, over $2.3 million in cuts from 2018, 2019. Again, just to review some of those, just to kind of keep that fresh in people's thoughts here. So 2018, we cut about $500,000. Four teachers, part-time mechanic, reduced budgets in our building and technology, eliminate all day, every day kindergarten scholarships. And then folks went to part-time, and payroll clerk, and the manager of business, so to get to that file in a grand. Then after the levy not passing in May, we made phase-one reductions, which were about $813,000, which involved two teachers, two tech aides, technology aides, BHS Digital Academy, custodian, a couple of part-time cafeteria aides, bus drivers, and again, reduced budgets in building, technology, and then athletics, and also postponed the purchase of buses. So that's about $813,000, and then continued looking for ways to reduce costs in 2019. Another $168,000, two more teachers, and a decrease in insurance benefits with an agreement with the union. And then the planned reductions that are $1 million for next school year, 2021, another MOU with both the teachers, the certified and the classified, a 0% pay freeze, no steps, no increase in their salaries. That's for teachers, any certified staff, administrators, support staff, and classified. And then also are going to eliminate at least three to five, three to five certified positions through attrition, and that's for next school year. So if you add all those up, it's at least $2.3, probably closer to $2.5 million. But with those reductions, that got us down to negative $1.8 million in the 21, 22 school year. Just to kind of review those.
Is it okay if I announce that David Graham's going to be talking to us on the third, also?
I'm going to do that later.
Okay, all right. Some of the details about millage and that kind of thing, if you're the type of person that really wants to dig into all that and learn, the best way to do that is to speak to the county auditor. He's really good at, you know, giving information on that in an understandable form, and it's difficult, you know, for us to answer all your questions about that kind of thing. The following pages after that are all the notes or the assumptions that I've had to make in order to arrive at the figures on that forecast. Because since we're forecasting five years into the future, I've always said, no way it's going to be precisely accurate. You do the best you can. And so you have to make assumptions on a lot of different things, that items are going to increase by a certain percentage, and/or stay the same, or whatever. You list all those assumptions in these notes, and then the reader of the forecast document can get an idea for what I use to arrive at those numbers. So anybody could agree or disagree with my assumptions. Assumptions have to be made, so that's why we have these. And like I said, I don't know if I got into detail at the beginning, but this document has to be filed with the Ohio Department of Education twice a year, once by May 31st and once by, is it November 30th? November 30th. And so it's updated, and you can update it more than that if you want to, to have a more accurate document, but you're only required to do it twice a year. It is on our website also, so if you want to see the document and the notes at your leisure, when you can maybe read them better, that's a good time to do that. So if we go on to the next, a couple pages advanced there till you get to the one that says bond retirement 002 at the top, keep going. There. That's the next actual page of the tax budget. This is the one that the county auditor pays the most attention to in order to set the bond rate. It's where we estimate what our balance is going to be in that bond retirement fund to pay principal and interest on our debt, on the building. It's what we estimate to bring in, and what we have, we know we have to pay in principal and interest. We have an estimate for the, a lot of people don't realize this, but the county auditor and county treasurer charge us auditor and treasurer fees for collecting delinquent taxes. So if someone doesn't pay their taxes, you know, they have to advertise, or whatever they do to get that, and the school district is charged for those fees. I always find that interesting. It's about like we're charged for our own audit annually, too, by the state. So this page just refers to that bond retirement fund. And I want to also point out that the columns on this page now, the first two, and I don't know why they do the document this way, but the first two are an annual amount, annually 2019 fiscal year, 2020. The last three columns then are six-month periods, if you look at the dates at the top. So if you're, if you look at this and you're comparing numbers across, remember you have two annual amounts and then three six-month periods. The budget year, remember that we are referring to and approving tonight, hopefully, would be the third and fourth columns, July 1, 20 through 6, 30, 21. Want to flip to that next page. We have this pretty much the same form, but for our permanent improvement fund, the one that we have the two-mill levy in place for. And the, probably the line of interest here is the line that says donations, the row. That is the money, most of that money is what we are receiving annually for naming rights on our stadium for Miami Valley South. So we received just under $100,000 a year for 16 years, I believe it is, or 15 years, and we had a double payment the first year. So that money comes in, and the rest of that would be, although it says donations, it's from rentals of the stadium and that kind of thing. Those are the only other items that can go in as a receipt to our permanent improvement fund, just the taxes for that purpose, and then any rentals or donations pertaining specifically to a stadium or a PI item like that. Then on the expenditures out of that fund, it's kind of an educated guess, too, because we do know that we pay all of our, any debt that we have, we pay out of this account other than the bond issue that was on the page we reviewed previously. Any questions about any of this, or anything we talked about so far? Flip on to that next page. These are all the other funds that we have, that we know are in place, except for the student activity accounts. So these are non-tax funds. For instance, any of the 400 or 500 funds on the left there are federal and state grants. The 006 is lunchroom fund, and that's self-supported most years. You know, that's funded by some state money, some federal money, and the fees that people pay, the kids pay for their lunches, any adults fund that one. And it might be interesting to note that that's $800,000 a year is what I estimate that that costs to run a lunchroom program for our entire school district. Then we have principal's activity account. That's not, that money's raised by, I don't know, what, sales and different things like that, not, taxpayer doesn't pay for that one. Athletic fund, the money there is raised from gate receipts and some other things like that. And then all the rest of those items from Fund 451 down to 590 are all state and federal grants. The amount that I have there to receive and spend is estimated because we haven't got that finalized for that period yet. So I just put in a number that's similar to what we're getting right now, about the only way to do that. Then the last, the last page is really going to be difficult to see, but it is the actual amortization schedule for payment of our bond issue. So it shows each year through December 2031, when the bond issue's paid off, how much we would pay in principal and interest. This bond issue was passed in 2003. Some facts about it, if you're interested. The bonds were issued in October 2003, and it was $43,985,000. That included purchase of the 40 acres for the middle school, construction of the middle school building itself, and renovation of three other buildings. And so if, at the bottom line, we, on that debt, that bond retirement debt, is $27,145,000 still outstanding on principal for that one. Any questions about the tax budget? That's the entire document that I have to review at this point. This would be, this would be approved at the regular board meeting that we have after this budget hearing, and then I have to file it with the county auditor's office. And like I said, it can be amended at any time, so it's not a, it's just mainly the treasurer's estimate of what, with the knowledge we have at this point, what might happen.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, we have 12 minutes before our regular meeting will begin, so. We'll be back, I guess, yeah. There is time for public participation during the meeting, as is indicated on the agenda. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Swearing in.
Karen, if you'd like to come up for us. Raise your right hand if you would read from the form.
I, Karen Long, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as member of the Board of Education in and for the said Bel Brook Sugar Creek School District, Green County, Ohio, to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during my continuance. Is that right? Thank you. In said office, and until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, if you would be likewise.
All right, thank you. I, David Carpenter, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a member of the Board of Education in and for the Bel Brook Sugar Creek School District, Green County, Ohio, to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter, to be enacted during my continuance in said office, and until my successor is chosen and qualified.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Liming, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mrs. France?
Here.
Mrs. Long?
Here.
Mr. Price's absent, and Mrs. Sloughman.
Here.
Do we have a motion to accept the, excuse me, I need a recommendation for approval of acceptance of the resignation of the school board member Kathy Kingston effective December 23rd, 2019?
Sumoed.
Is there a second? I'd like to read the letter that she sent to the district. She says, "I, Kathy Kingston, am submitting my official resignation from the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Board of Education. I am grateful for your patience, as I have been focused on healing during my absence. Unfortunately, my progress has been slower than I had hoped. I feel at this time it would be within the best interest of the district to find a suitable replacement for my position. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve our community over the years as a teacher and as a board member. I am confident the administration, staff, and students will continue the tradition of excellence established in Bel Brook Sugar Creek Schools. Respectfully, Kathy Kingston," and it is dated Monday, December 23rd, 2019." I'd also like to comment briefly. Kathy Kingston served on this board for more than 13 years before having a major medical event at the end of April 2019. I'm happy to report that she is now able to be away from constant medical care and continue her recovery at a family member's home. We thank her for her voluntary resignation so that the school board can appoint a replacement for the remainder of her term. Is there any discussion from other board members? All right, Kevin, please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
The next is the appointment of a new board member. Whereas a vacancy has been caused on the Board of Education by reason of resignation, and whereas this Board of Education has the legal authority to fill a vacancy for the unexpired term thereof, now therefore be it resolved by a majority vote of all remaining members of the Board of Education of the Bel Brook Sugar Creek School District, that Kevin Price be and hereby is appointed to serve as a member of the Board of Education of this school district for the unexpired term of Kathy Kingston, ending on December 31st, 2021. Do we have a motion to accept that resolution?
Sumoed.
Mrs. Sloughman, second?
Seven.
Karen. I'd like to comment a little bit on that, on the replacement process before we vote. On December 23rd, we received Kathy Kingston's resignation, and on December 24th, then we announced that we would be accepting candidates for the replacement position and accepting applications and letters of request through January 2nd. We received 13 qualified applications, the last one about 11 o'clock on January, 11:00 PM on January 2nd. There was one, one application that we could not accept because the person was not a registered voter in our district, and three applications we could not accept because they arrived after the deadline. We had, so we had 13 qualified candidates. We interviewed those candidates on Monday and on Tuesday in open meetings that were formally announced. They, we had a formal call to order. We had the pledge of allegiance. We had the roll call. We had a motion to go into executive session, and a second for that, and a roll call vote on going into executive session. And then from there, we invited individuals in for interviews during the executive session. We finished each of those sessions just before 10 o'clock on Monday night, and somewhere between 10:30 and 11:00 on Tuesday night. So it was very thorough and enjoyable in a lot of, a lot of cases, although it was extremely tiring by the time we were all through it. My comment on the nomination is that Mr. Price has the traits and business experience that will help us continue to be successful and can represent the perspective of military families in our district. He was also a very strong candidate in our most recent election, and I believe that he will be a real asset to the board. Other board members have any comments or questions? All right, hearing done. Mr. Liming, would you call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. We would, if Mr. Price was here, be able to swear him in. He is on a business trip and out of state right now. So we will swear him in as a member of the board at our next opportunity, which, that we are in either a regular or special meeting. All right, moving on to the election of officers. Do we have any nominations for president?
I nominate David Carpenter.
Are there any other nominations? All right, do we have, would someone like to move that we close the nominations for the office of president?
Sumoed.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Second.
Mrs. France? Mr. Liming, call the roll on closing the nominations.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Liming, would you call the roll then for voting for president?
Yes, and since there's only one nomination, you can just say yes for Carpenter, or no, or abstain, the three options on this. Okay. Let's see. Okay. Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Abstain.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion is, Mr. Carpenter is approved. Thank you. It's funny to talk to you about yourself in the third person. All right, for vice president, do we have nominations for vice president? And I would like to nominate Mrs. Sloughman. Are there any other nominations? All right, do we have a motion to close the nominations for vice president?
Sumoed.
Mrs. France, and a second?
Sumoed.
Mrs. Long? Mr. Liming, please call the roll on closing the nominations.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
I'm abstaining.
All right, now, please call the roll for vice president. Similarly, it would be either to say Mrs. Sloughman, or yes, if you would like to have Mrs. Sloughman, or no, or abstain.
Right. Okay, Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
I'm abstaining.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. And Mrs. Sloughman is now vice president. All right. We've gone through some of the tripping stuff now, so we can go on pretty easily. The good news recognition, I will spend a moment to go through that, and Dr. Cozad, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep, so January is school board recognition month, so I would just like to say a huge thank you to our board members and our new board member, and our new board member that's not here also. Really, being a board member is a very challenging and sometimes thankless job, and so I would just like to say on behalf of- just like to say on behalf of myself, the administration, the teachers, the staff, and the community, thank you very much for all the hard work and dedication and time and effort that you give to our students and our community. You really do have the best interest of our students, our community, in mind when you spend countless hours dedicating to our district. So again, thank you very much, and I have a certificate of appreciation here. So, Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Mrs. France?
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Long?
Thank you very much.
And Mrs. Sloughman? Thank you very much.
Moving on into our reorganizational meeting. We have a motion to establish a service fund to be established in the amount of $4,000 for fiscal year 2020 for the purpose of board member professional meeting expenses as permitted by Ohio Revised Code 3315 dot 15. The fiscal year 2020 rate was set at $4,000 as well.
I'll make the motion if it's fiscal year 2021.
Yeah.
Oh, did I say it wrong?
Yeah, that's the first number.
So sorry. Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank Mrs. Sloughman. Any questions, comments on the motion as amended appropriately? Okay, please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to appoint the superintendent of schools as representative for federal programs and recommend authorizing the superintendent to file applications for federal programs and educational grants, and to appoint representatives to complete all forms and evaluations required by the programs and/or grants? Your motion?
So moved.
Mrs. France?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman? Is there any question? This is like previous years. In fact, the vast majority of our reorganizational meeting items are like prior years. All right, go ahead and call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
And Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes. My note says that you would take this one, or do I?
Yes, I can do this one. On number 11, there are a lot of items there under number 11 that we're approving that are annual approvals. If you- if any of those you need further information on, let me know, or let's discuss it now because some of these are- for instance, the one I want to bring up, just because it's quite often misunderstood, is the one that says the authorize the treasurer to secure advances, the first one there, on property tax money as people pay their property tax bills to the county treasurer. We are allowed to receive a portion of that money, so we draw on it as it is paid rather than waiting for two months till we get our actual settlement from the time the tax bills are mailed out. So that's just authorizing me to get the money in advance, so. So could I get a motion to approve number 11?
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Long?
Okay, does anyone have any questions on any of that?
I have no questions. Mrs. Sloughman? Mrs. France? Mrs. Long? No. Okay, you may call the roll.
All right. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Recommend the incumbent president serve as president pro tem at the annual organizational meeting in January 2021 until duly reappointed by associate board members or replaced by a duly elected successor at the annual reorganizational meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman and Mrs. France. Any questions? Comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. And number 13, we have a motion to approve the membership and appointment of board members to the following positions, and they are listed there. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman? I'd like to comment that since Mr. Price is not here to participate in kind of deciding which role each of us would assume, I'd like to recommend that we make some interest, express some interest in different items if you have an interest at least at this point in time, and that we then defer making a decision on this until our next meeting. So do we have anyone who would like to do the student achievement liaison spot? Interested? Okay, Mrs. Sloughman and Mrs. France are both interested.
That's okay, she can.
Okay.
I can fight over it.
You know, arm wrestle. Yeah, that's right. The OSB Capitol Conference Delegate, I'd be happy to do that unless somebody else wants to. All right. The Capitol Conference Alternate? Anyone? The Representative to the BSEF? Is there an interest there?
How often is they meeting?
I do not know.
Couple times, probably four times a year.
Okay, Mary. Representative Financial Advisory Committee? Any interests?
I think that should be Kevin.
Well, ask Kevin about that one. Okay. Representative of the Bel Brook Sugar Creek School Safety Committee, and based on Mr. Price's interview, he was interested in that. And then Representative to the Green County ESC Business Advisory Council? Have anyone who's?
Kevin should do that, maybe.
Pardon me, maybe? Or might you be interested?
Maybe.
Okay.
Do we have any ones that express interest as alternate to the?
Karen.
Ah, Karen.
Karen did.
All right, so.
The top legislative liaison is kind of stuck in that top.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. The legislative liaison, which is at the top of the list. Is there a person who's expressed, anyone who has an interest in that at this point?
But that's for Kevin.
Yeah, we'll need to have that.
He finishes up this.
Yeah. All right, then, I would move that we table this decision until another meeting. Do we have a second on tabling the motion? Karen? So would you call the roll on that, the question of tabling the decision?
Okay. Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Okay. So we will address that at another meeting to finalize those selections. Number 14, recommend the approval of using a facemile signature on the- for the treasurer on checks. Let me say that again. We recommend the approval of using a facsimile signature of the treasurer on checks.
So moved.
Is there? Thank you. Mrs. France and Mrs. Sloughman.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 15, recommend the adoption of the resolution to waive the reading of the record of the proceedings of the previous minutes in accordance with Section 3313 dot 26 of the Ohio Revised Code.
So moved.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Second.
Mrs. Long? Any questions or comments on that? It means that we don't read the- all the minutes at the beginning of every meeting of what happened at the last meeting. Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes. And number 16, recommend the authorization for the district's continuation of membership in the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Cooperative and the Ohio Purchasing Cooperative Program, and hereby approve the payment of all applicable membership fees.
So moved.
Mrs. France?
Second.
Mrs. Long? This is a- this is an area where we are able to purchase a variety of our services and supplies, mostly supplies, I think. At a reduced rate because we are in cooperation with a variety of other school districts. So financially, it's a good deal for us to be able to do this.
Right.
Probably stepping all over your comments, so I apologize.
I was just going to say, the big-ticket items we purchase cooperatively with about 100 other school districts is purchase of school buses, or medical insurance, classroom supplies, just off the top of my head, a lot of a variety of items. It can even be maintenance supplies, or library books, or media, that kind of thing, so.
Okay.
We save far, far more than the membership fees, so.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. All right, that completes our reorganizational meeting segment, and we are now able to go into our regular meeting. So, Mr. Liming, we'll go to you for the treasurer's report.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held December 12th?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman and Mrs. France?
Okay. Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. France?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I get a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of December 2019 as included with the agenda?
So moved.
Mrs. Sloughman, second. Mr. Carpenter?
Okay. Just wanted to review a couple things as I do each meeting, the-
Sorry to interrupt, Kevin. Is that on the other document up there? Dave, can you turn the other- it's the other- on the other document, I think, is this sheet that you scroll down? I think on- no, go the other way. No, other way. Other way. There we go.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's fine.
There we go. Good.
Thank you.
Good.
There we are.
Well, we need to make sure we got the right document here, that that's the-
The right one?
Okay, in the blue section of your agenda, the third blue page, second sheet, I guess.
Okay. That's it?
Right, that's the one that's being projected there. You can see on this one what percentage of our total budget is received, since we're at the halfway point of the fiscal year, December 31st is, you know, six months out of 12 have been established. So we can see real estate taxes at this point represent 63% of our entire revenue, and the state foundation is only 23%. The reason we always say 27% is the part of that next one, that 8%, state and federal assistance, part of that is also state funding. So we have about 27% of our budget received from the state, 63% from real estate tax, and the rest is tuition, investment earnings, and other miscellaneous items. And then the expenditures, we scroll on down to those, we have salaries and wages, you can see the percentages for employee retirement as mandated by the state, and medical insurance, and all those other items there. And then I always include pie charts to look at the information I just gave you if you are more of a geometrical, I don't know, learner or something, it might be a way. And then on the last page is the spreadsheet for like the last 20 years of general fund balances at the end of each month, so we can see the trends. As expected, the last, for December, if you look at that last column, the last three years have decreased. And the- usually the leanest months are around December or January, so. And I've got other items there that were included also, but any questions about anything?
Any questions? Mrs. Long? Mrs. France? Mrs. Sloughman? Please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Could I get a motion to approve the tax budget as reviewed during the budget hearing prior to this meeting?
So moved.
Mrs. France?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman? Are there any other questions from the tax budget time?
I just wanted to state that, I stated this in the budget hearing, but for those who weren't here, we have been contacted by the Ohio Department of Education that because our five-year forecast is showing a red balance in the third year of the forecast, that there are some items we need to gather and submit to the Ohio Department of Education about what we feel we need to do from here on out to alleviate that problem. So I just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and the last one that I have is that I need a- I need a motion to approve a then-announced certificate in the amount of $3,965.54 to Scholastic for the Stephen Bell Elementary Book Fair. We've got the invoice before we created the purchase order, but it's not a general fund expenditure, and it's something we do every year.
So moved.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. France?
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Going on to item number 18, correspondence. The board members did get a letter from Parker Wright, and I did respond to that letter during the month, and will be corresponding with him again. Is there any other correspondence? All right. All right, we'll hear a report now to the board from Rob Schultz.
I didn't think to make a PowerPoint. My name is Rob Schultz. I teach computer science at Bel Brook High School. I've been a member of the math and computer science department. Wow, it's been 20 years. When I was hired 20 years ago, I was hired to teach half-day math and half-day computer science, and at the time, our computer science program consisted of keyboarding, intro to Microsoft Office, and intro to web design, all of which are very important classes, but none of which are really computer science classes. They're more business applications. So the next year, we started our first actual computer science class, AP Computer Science A, which has kind of been the foundational class that we've had since then. But over the next, you know, following 19 years, we've added support courses, and at this point today, we have five really good quality, solid computer science courses. We have two semester-long intro courses that are intro courses. We have intro to computer science principles and intro to Java programming. At the other end of the spectrum, we now have two AP Computer Science courses. We have AP Computer Science A, which is the longest-running course in our computer science program. And five years ago, we added AP Computer Science Principles, that's College Board's newest AP course. And then somewhere in the middle, we have a year-long course. It's an entry-level course for students that want to get a little background in programming, but they aren't necessarily ready for, or they don't want the rigor quite yet of an AP curriculum. And that's our game development and multimedia programming course. To give you a little bit of information about the game development course, like I said, it's, it's for students that have, it's an entry-level course, so it's for students that have no programming experience. We basically cover on, on just the basic building blocks of writing computer programs, but then, we, we review those, and we recover those, and recover those in a variety of different programming languages. So, we start out, the first semester is the game development course, and we use little Spiro and Ollie robots that were purchased with a grant from BSEF. We use Alice, which is a language out of Carnegie Mellon University. We use Scratch. And once we go into second semester, that's when we get into the multimedia programming parts. We use a programming language called Python. We use it to create music, and we use it to create picture filters and a lot of really cool stuff. But, just again, the basic building blocks. Probably the biggest complaint I get from our students is that we don't have anything to offer after our AP courses. It's not uncommon, even with two APs, that we'll have a student that'll take our AP course, one of them maybe as a sophomore, one as a junior, and then we really don't have much left as seniors. So, that's something I've been kind of thinking about for, for the past few years, is what we could do to offer. And then, last, last year, I had six of my AP students call me out on that. I had six students who were in, in either one or the other, or both of my AP courses. Three of them are planning to go on next year and major in computer science. Two of them are going on to major in engineering, and the third, I, I don't recall the exact major, but it's a STEM-related field, and they said that they wanted another computer science course, so they signed up for our game development multimedia programming course. And I explained to them that they are far beyond what we do in that course. They said it didn't matter. They wanted, they wanted something. So, so I was trying to figure out what to do with that course, well, then another opportunity came up. Last spring, I received an invitation from College Board to apply to attend the first annual 100 Teacher Summit for AP Computer Science A, and it was held in California, in Menlo Park, at Facebook's headquarters. I applied. One of the questions was, for, for teachers who had been teaching more than 10 years, was if willing to present, would you present, and what topics? So, I listed a half a dozen topics that I would be interested in presenting, and I was selected. So, so I had the opportunity, I know this is kind of a tangent from where I was a second ago, but it'll, it'll circle back around here in a second.
Okay.
I had an opportunity to go to Facebook's headquarters. College Board covered all of the expenses. It was an amazing trip. We, we were there for three days. It was constant presentations. We toured Facebook's headquarters. We had presentations. There were, there were 100 teachers that were invited, 85, 85 of them were new teachers. 15 of us were considered master teachers and were asked to present. So, the other 14 presentations were phenomenal. People that I've, I've worked with in the past through, through different committees and things, people that probably won't mean, you know, the names won't mean much to the people in the room, but to a computer science teacher, these are the rock stars. So, to be able to, to go onstage and, and share a stage with them and present, it was just a, a career highlight. It was a phenomenal experience. We also had several presentations from some Facebook employees. There was a person from the data analytics department, there was someone from the App is Up Development Department, but probably the most beneficial presentation that I heard while I was there, we had an open panel discussion with five college interns who were serving an internship with Face, Facebook. And this is where I started developing the idea of what I was gonna do with these six kids in my game development class. They described their experience. They said that, that on their first day, they were put into collaborative teams, they were gonna be working with this team through the entire summer, they were to brainstorm and present an idea for a brand-new, original Facebook app. They had to develop the app, they had to get it, they presented and proposed it and had to get it approved, then they had to develop the app, and then, at the end, they were to present the result to a panel of Facebook executives, which sounded like an amazing experience to, to a high school computer science teacher. Well, one of the teachers of the 100 that was there asked these students, what should we as teachers be doing to better prepare our kids for an opportunity like the one you have? And they all agreed unanimously that when they came into that position, they were pretty solid with their computer science skills and their programming skills, but they weren't ready for any of the other things. They weren't ready to work collaboratively, they had done a couple of partner projects here and there, but nothing as, as large scale as what, as what they were assigned to do. They weren't prepared to do presentations and proposals, they weren't learned to, they weren't prepared to learn a new programming environment without the safety net of a professor or a lab aide, and they were most terrified, the, the point we talked to them is when they were preparing to, to do this presentation to the Facebook executives, and they were terrified about that, because they had no idea who was gonna be on the panel, how high leveled the executives were. One of them even said that he was afraid he was gonna be sitting face-to-face with Mark Zuckerberg himself. And they were pretty terrified bad. So, as I, as I sat and less, as I sat and listened to these kids, I, I thought about these six kids that were gonna be in the game development class. So, that is what these six kids have been doing in my game development class. They were kind of put in their own group on one side, so I've got my intro group, I now have my AP, my post-AP group. Their assignment, every assignment is to work with at least a partner, if not a group of three or more. They have to develop and brainstorm a game idea, they have to present it to me, as well as what their learning objectives are, what they're gonna do to push themselves that they've never done before. I have to approve it, and then they get anywhere from two to four weeks to develop the new game. Once they are finished, we hit the deadline, and on the deadline day, a panel comes into the room to listen to their presentation and, and ask questions. And they don't know who the panel is gonna be until the panel walks into the room. There have been a couple of times, with the exception of the intro group, that's kind of a captive audience. We've had Mr. Whalen, we've had Mr. Hand, we've had several of our teachers. There was one presentation they did where it was our English, our AP English, Literatures, entire AP English Lit class came in to serve on the panel. Their eyes got pretty big with that one. Midterm exam, the panel was, let's see, I'm gonna forget somebody, it was Mr. Whalen, it was two of our guidance counselors, one of our teachers, one of my alums, a student that is now majoring in computer science that was home for Christmas break, and Dr. Kozad was gracious enough to come over and sit on the panel for that one. And they've done some really amazing things, okay? So, I'm, I'm proud of what these kids are doing, and that kind of presented an opportunity for us to add another class to the books for next year. It won't require any additional cost, it won't require any additional man-hours, and in fact, I don't see it working any differently than it does this year. The kids that sign up to do the advanced game development course will be in the same room at the same time as the kids doing the, the regular game development course. They'll sit on one side, the other group will sit on the other side, and I'll just balance both at the same time. So, we're talking about a pretty small clientele. Looking at my two current AP classes, we might have anywhere from six to 10 kids that would be eligible to do it if they choose to, so it's a pretty small group, it's very manageable, but it just gives them an opportunity to do something after AP if they take the AP courses as a winter classmate. And like I said, they're doing some amazing, amazing things, some of the things that rival some of the games that are, that are actually out on the market right now, so. Any questions for me?
Wow!
Yeah, I just wanna comment, just wanna comment, when I was there on the panel, you know, it was, it was a farming game, so you had to plant these crops, and the sun would come up, and then some would go away and everything else, so it was very, it was very well-done by those students.
They're, they're doing some very elaborate things. They're using a professional-quality game development environment called Unity. Unity offers educational licenses to schools for free. And I, I would also like, since we're talking budgets and things, I would like to, to point out that, that I don't do anything in my class that's any cost to the students. All the software we use is free, the textbooks I find are free downloads. Anything we do, whether it be Alice, which comes, like I said, from Carnegie Mellon, I mean, all of those are things that are offered by universities, is free download, so there's no, no extra cost to the kids. So, Unity gave us five educational licenses, and, and that's what they're using, but the, the three-dimensional graphics, I mean, the things these kids are coming up with is just, are phenomenal, so.
Again, the students did a great job, they did a great job presenting it, great job getting organized, they were extremely organized in their presentation, you know, the soft skills that we always talk about that kids need, they had those soft skills to be able to present, answer questions, ask questions, and just had everything well-planned out. So, and the game was obviously very impressive also, but, you know, just to comment on Mr. Schultz, Mr. Schultz exemplifies the quality of teachers that we have in the school district, and the dedication that he has, and just the passion he has, so I really appreciate that.
One question.
Yeah.
We work on this a lot at the careers center, making presentations, and we have kids present to this, to the board meetings, about projects they're doing. Is this tied in in any way with any of the other courses at the high school?
It's not. We do have a little bit of overlap, some of our clientele, again, because, because some of our kids plan on going on into engineering, we do have some of the kids that do computer science overlap and do some of the engineering courses, so they kind of get both. And, and I think it works well when they do that. I've got, I've got several students in my AP Computer Science A course right now that are doing an engineering course where they're programming robots, so a lot of the things we're doing apply back and forth, and, and it reinforces a lot of those skills. So, for the ones that are going on in, into engineering or, or computer science, the more programming they can do, and the different, the different things they can do with it, the better off they're gonna be when they get to college.
Yeah, I think doing presentations would be good for all of the students.
Yeah.
And this, I, I would agree, this, this ties right into our strategic plan, which is project-based learning, and part of that project-based learning is solving real-world problems, having, you know, authentic audience coming in and, and discussing and evaluating that, and allowing them to have those soft skills and practice those soft skills, and be able to learn the information and then take it to the next level. So, this is, these are the kind of things, as we do project-based learning, we had training last year at the beginning of the year, and it's, again, that's a part of the strategic plan.
Definitely.
Right. Any other questions? Thank you. Yes. That's awesome. We now move into our open communication time. Mrs. Sloughman, would you check to see if there's anybody signed in? All right, thank you. All right, Heidi Anderson?
So, this is the monthly community concerns report, and I appreciate Dr. Kozad being willing to meet face-to-face to get these answered. I probably don't think that's the best format, just because I don't want any misrepresentation to go out. If I hear the answers, there can be some misrepresentation there, I want to make sure that the district is represented in these answers. So, this, this is what I received for this month, I have copies for all of you if you'd like them.
Oh, okay, thank you.
At the October board meeting, there was a mention of having Dr. Kozad's evaluation completed during the November board meeting, and we did not see that occur, so if we could get an update on the timeframe if that's already occurred, or if that will be put back on the agenda for then. The community continues to call for open work sessions. A community member would like to know if the school could plan some sort of town hall-type meeting in the run-up to the levy. Another community member would like to know why there has not been more organized efforts in passing the levy, who is in charge of the levy campaign, and how they can get more information on how to volunteer. And I see that's in the agenda later, so I'll point that to the, that in the video. A community member would like to know where they can get more information on the functions of the board and the different types of meetings that you guys have, if there's a place on the website that I could direct them, you could let me know that, on how the board functions. And then, we, they also would like to know, a community member sent me a question about what the district's plan is should the levy fail, so they would like some information on, so they can make an informed judgment on that. A community member also wanted to know if the district's legal expenses are coming from the general fund, or if there's a litigation insurance. And the last thing is, the community, a community member sent me a compliment on the efforts of Mrs. Rivero and the National Honor Society during Christmas in the park. Mrs. Rivero involved the entire community with the project, and it made downtown look beautiful, and the mom said that her kids especially enjoyed finding the milk jugs that they decorated.
Nice. All right. Thank you very much. All right, going on to the superintendent's report.
New business, certified licensed employment resignation leave of absence supplemental duty. Recommend acceptance of supplemental duty resignation from Zachary Huffman as girls' varsity soccer coach effective December 26, 2019.
Hello.
Second.
Mrs. France? Mrs. Sloughman?
And as he noted in his, his letter here, that's to spend more time with his family.
Perfectly understandable.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend approval of the following supplemental duty contract for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year, Andrew Hartley as the girls' assistant across.
You have a motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman? Any question or comment? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Be resolved, the Belverick Street Board of Education has offered these supplemental duty positions via posting licensed employees of the district. The board either had no qualified licensed employee applicants or no employees applied before these positions were offered to non-licensed persons. The following non-licensed persons have met qualifications for the board posting the supplemental duty positions as noted below. Be recommend approval of the following supplemental duty contracts for the 2019-20 school year, Jeff Chu, Karen Haviland, Malagros Larisse, and Sarah Wall.
Hello.
Mrs. France?
Second.
Mrs. Long? Any questions, comments? All right, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend approval of the following supplemental duty volunteers for the 19-20 school year, Michael Ballmer, Joseph Zack Klein, Steve Brech, Rob Hessinger, Robert McCain, and Bart Schenk.
Is there a motion?
Hello.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Second.
Mrs. France?
I just wanna, to compliment Mr. Odell, he does a very nice job of getting all these, these applying individuals to, to coach our teams, so he does a lot of hard work behind the scenes of making sure they have the proper licenses and people activity forms and all that good stuff, so I appreciate that.
All right, please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes.
Recommend approval of the following substitute teachers for the remainder of the 19-20 school year, Alexandra Beers and Lauren Walls.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Again, this will be my monthly advertisement for substitute teachers. We are in need of substitute teachers. If you have a four-year degree, you can call Mrs. Woody, and we will get your application going, and we will, we will get you on the list, we will keep you busy. So, there's really a high need, and again, that's from, there's not as many young people going into education, that number is decreasing and decreasing because of the challenges of being a teacher in education, and also, STRS, which is the retirement system for teachers, has changed the retirement system that now you have to work to get full retirement to age 60, and at least 35 years. So, in the past, it had been just 30 years, so you could retire, so someone could retire at 52, 53 from the system, and a lot of those people would come back and sub for five, six, seven years, but it gets a little more challenging when you're 60, so the, the two ends there, there are a lot less folks, so it's really challenging to get substitute teachers.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Be support staff employment resignation leave of absence, recommend approval of the following support staff limited contract for the remainder of the 19-20 school year, Roderick Brandon Adler, special needs assistant, classification number six, step zero, 189, 189 days, 6.75 hours per day, effective January 6, 2020, and early authorized on that.
All right, do we have a motion?
Hello.
Mrs. France?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman? Any questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Bus driver physicals request approval of the use of doctors of urgent care as a secondary provider for transportation department physical drug testing on an as-needed basis.
Do we have a motion?
Agreed.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. France? Any questions or comments? What's, how frequently do bus drivers need physicals? Is that, um, sorry, I should have, I mean, I'm sure it's upon employment.
Yeah, it's upon appointment, that's on as-needed basis.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, please call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Out-of-state travel, recommend approval of the following out-of-state travel. Middle school math pentathlon students advisor Allison Visicnani to Indianapolis, Indiana, April 18 to the 19, April 18, 19, 2020, participation in the national math pentathlon tournament. Cost of the district includes up to one substitute teacher for one day.
Is there a motion?
Agreed.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. Sloughman? Any questions? Math pentathlons, an excellent event.
This is just, this is just a motion for the first item, right? We're not doing them all at the same time?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I love math pentathlon.
Yes, I've been to a few of those with my son, and they're good times.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
High school marching band in Indianapolis, Indiana, participating in Bands of America Grand National Championships, November 12 to the 14th, 2020. Cost of the district includes two substitute teachers for two days.
Agreed.
Mrs. France, second, Mr. Carpenter. Any questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Motion passes.
High school marching band Orlando, Florida, performing Walt Disney World, December 28, 2020, to January 2nd, 2021. No cost to the district.
Motion?
Agreed.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Second.
Mrs. France? This is an every-four-year type event?
Correct.
As I understand, yes.
Correct.
Still is, okay.
So, students fundraising and so forth to go on the trip, or to, parents have to pay, so it's, but there's a lot of fundraising that can be done to be able to raise those funds.
Do you think the board members should supervise some of these trips? We'll go for it.
I might be going that to their as a parent, maybe, so, maybe, yes.
Maybe, there you go. All right, any other questions or comments? It will bring a, a great perspective to the board, Mrs. Long, thank you very much. All right, please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Transportation coordinator Beverly Wetzel to Scottsdale, Arizona, April 22 to the 24th, 2020, to attend the school bus fleet connects conference. This is no cost to the district, all travel arrangements, hotel paid for by SV FX.
Nice.
Agreed.
Mrs. Long? Mrs. Sloughman?
Again, Mrs. Wetzel just does a fantastic job with our transportation, extremely efficient and effective with our bus routes, just handles our transportation department, our mechanics, the whole special needs aides that are on the buses, just does a fantastic job, goes above and beyond for Call of Duty, definitely.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, just want to put these dates out there as possibilities, and trying to see if everybody is good with these considerations, January 20, I'm sorry, January 16 and January 30, 2020, for special meeting dates, 7:00 PM, on both those nights at Belbruck Middle School.
Yeah. You okay with that?
Yeah. Okay. And we're, we're still putting together the agenda for the 16th, also for the 30th, but I, I will say, on the 30th, a part of that agenda is our performance audit from the Ohio Auditor's team, so that will be at the January 30th meeting.
We do need a resolution to set those meetings, too.
Oh, okay. All right, do we have a motion to set meeting dates, special meeting dates for January 16 and 30th at 7:00 PM at the Belbruck Middle School?
Second.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. France? And thank you for sharing that information, please call the roll.
Okay, Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, discussion of upcoming levy information meetings, again, this is information about the levy, and actually, this information is on our website, we have a levy, a levy tab on our website, so, so the public meetings that we're having, we have multiple opportunities for community members to be able to ask questions, get answers, and some of those opportunities are coffee with the superintendent. So, the first coffee with the superintendent is on January 16, that's at Bellhop Cafe at 7:15 and 9:15 AM. January 31st at Winans on Feedwire, 7:15 and 9:15 AM. February 11th at Winans on Feedwire at 5:00 and 6:30 PM, and again, this is all on the website, on the levy information tab, so you're trying to write down those really, really fast, they're on the website. February 27th, Bellhop Cafe at 7:15 and 9:15 AM. So, again, the way the coffee with the superintendent work, it's really an informal kind of situation, I'll just talk for a few minutes, and then really it's question and answers, okay? Two other opportunities, we will have two community meetings. February 3rd will be a combination, David Graham will be presenting for half of the time, he'll be talking about the real estate tax pieces of it, and then, the second half of it will be, school representatives will be having, presenting a little bit of information about the levy, and then, there'll be a question-answer part of that, so that's on the 3rd, and then February 17th is just school representatives, again, presenting information about the levy, and then being able to answer questions. We will be getting a, there's two ways to be able to ask questions, we'll be getting a link out, that if you want to ask a question, we'll be posting that on the website of what the link is, so you can ask the question there, or if you come, we'll do the old three-by-five cards, you can put your question on the three-by-five card, and we'll, we'll answer those questions for you. Also want to note, on February 3rd and 17th, the folks that are coordinating those meetings with Dayton Mediation Center, the same group that coordinated the, the school board, really wasn't a debate, asked the candidate, asked the candidate back in, was it about late October or so? So, the Dayton Mediation Group will be facilitating both of those meetings on the 3rd and the 17th, so, there'll be multiple opportunities for folks to be able to ask questions, and all, and a third option also is, you can give me a call, you can give Mr. Lyman a call, and give a board member a call, and give us an email, we'll sit down with you, I just met with somebody, well, they just left, they left a few minutes ago, sat down with somebody earlier in the week that had some questions, we sat down and talked, you know, it's really, school funding and levies can get complicated really fast, a lot of the times, 99% of the times, it's much better to sit down and just talk back and forth, because something that I might say, or Mr. Lyman might say, might spur a question, or need further explanation, so a lot of times, it's, it's much better to, to kind of sit down and be able to go back and forth on those. So, those are the opportunities, the other pieces are, we are having in-home coffee and chats, so, we've had some community members that have signed up for those, and they'll, they'll have about 10 or 15, they'll invite 10 or 15 people to their house, and Mr. Lyman and I, and a board member will come, and same kind of format, will present information about the levy, and then you can ask questions about the levy. So, again, you know, hindsight being 2020, feedback from the last levy was, we didn't do a good, do a good enough job of communicating with our community, we now have at least, at least six opportunities for, in a public way, for people to be able to ask questions and to get answers about that, okay? And I encourage you to attend one of those, the coffee with the superintendent, we had probably 10 or 11 at the beginning, when we started in July, we had, we had about two a month until through November, and there were 10 or 11 at the beginning, and at the end, there were one or two, and they're the same one or two people, which, that was, that's fine, it's one or two people, but, you know, those are really informal opportunities for people to be able to ask questions, it just doesn't have to be about the levy, it can be about anything, real informal. The coffee with the superintendent, real informal, the other meetings are about, are about the levy. Yeah, and then I have a number three here, oh, sure, so just to provide some information about the levy, again, you can never hear enough about the levy, about the facts, because again, it takes seven, eight, nine, 10 times for, for folks to be able to digest that information. We have a 5.7 mil operating levy on the ballot, the last time we passed the levy was in 2015. Again, we only received 27% of our funding from the state, compared to the state average of 44%. Like I mentioned earlier during, I think it was during the budget hearing today, we, in previous board meetings, we made about 2.3 million in budget reductions between the summer of 2018 and all the way through next year. If passed, the levy would cost district taxpayers 1660 per $100,000 house per month. So, important pack, important key to that is also, just to let you know, voter registration ends on February 18th, so you can't express your opinion through the ballot box without being registered to vote, so make sure you get out, register to vote, again, voting information is on our website in the levy tab, or you can go to Green County Elections, it's there also. Those forms are also in each of our buildings, the voter registration forms. Early voting starts on February 19th, and election day is March 17th. Again, so, the reason why we need this levy, obviously, is the financial situation that we're in, and to fund the day-to-day operations of our district, you know, fine teachers and staff like Mr. Schultz there, really are the integral part of our, our district, and really came out through our, through a lot of our interviews and so forth, that quality school district, quality teachers, reason if a lot of newcomers moved to the school, or moved to the community, or not only a great community, but a great school system, so to be able to, to continue those things. And then, the, the other part of that is, what if it does not pass? We are working on those specific reductions, and we'll have that information out as soon as we possibly can. Again, there's only so many ways that you can do it, you know, it's either got to be, you know, teaching staff, support staff, increasing class sizes, decreasing electives, increasing fees, you know, those are the, the huge pieces of being able to, to, if the levy doesn't pass, to be able to, to help with our financial situation, or address our situation without passage of the levy. And to piggyback on that, talking about finances, if I may add a number three here, we had Representative Cup in our district on December 16th to talk about state funding, again, that was one of the things that, again, hindsight 2020, feedback from the levy, is that the state funding model out there, state funding proposal that was being proposed at that time of Representative Cup and Patterson, so we brought Representative Cup into the district. That, the video is on our website, I talked to Representative Peralos today, we're still working on getting those answers to those questions we gave them, those questions that were submitted before winter break, and, and he promised those back to me as soon as possible, and also the presentation, so I've made contact with Representative Peralos multiple times to be able to get that information. But that information is on our website also, in the financial section, and just to let you know, so, if that proposal passes, if it would have, if they would have passed last spring with the original, so there's, there's two simulations, there's a simulation from the spring, and there's one in the fall that's recent, so the one in the spring, we would have received an additional $693,000 in year one, whatever year one was, and year two, $549,000. Again, they haven't figured out where that money's coming from, so they, they just, it's proposed out there, but they don't know where the money's coming from, but they, after feedback from the, the districts and the school districts, they recalculated and redid some of that formula, so now, if it has ever passed, again, they're, they would, in a perfect world for them, they want to get passed by the end of this budget, which it just started in July, so it's a biennial budget, so two years, so if it passes as it is right now, we would get additional $162,000 in year one, if you're remembering correctly, that's down from 693,000, and year two, $140,000, that's down from 549,000, so, our district received less money from the, the Cup-Patterson proposal, and that's because they based this formula on real estate taxes, and also the income level, income level of the community. In the past, it's just been the real estate wealth, so they added in the income level wealth, that doesn't help our community, or our community out with this proposal. So I just wanted to give you an update on the Cup-Patterson. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For executive session, we need a motion for the purpose of an audit conference conducted by the auditor of state or independent certified public accounts with officials of the public office that is the subject of the audit, per revised Code 121.22, paragraph D2, is item number one, discussion with board attorney issues that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, per revised Code 121.22, paragraph G3, and finally, and for considering employment and compensation of a licensed public employee, per revised Code 121.22, paragraph G1. Do we have a motion?
Agreed.
Mrs. France?
Second.
Mrs. Long?
We would need to invite people.
Okay.
So, Mark Engle.
All right, we need to also invite Mark Engle.
And Nicole, I'm sorry, what was your last name? Bent? Okay.
Does she have her regional lead on here?
Okay.
Joe Braden.
Joe Braden. Tabitha Justice, and Tanya Wilson. Do we have a, we have a motion, did we have a second?
Yes.